Bringing together the Office of Council District 1, the LA Fire Department, and local organizations in Pico Union to make sure everyone had a happy Thanksgiving.
Now more than ever, we see that families are barely trying to make their way back from the recession. The economy is doing way better, but some families unfortunately are still not. So for us to be able to provide the most necessary meal for Thanksgiving, a turkey, is an honor for us.
Turkeys were presented to 200 residents by an army of volunteers here at LAPD Fire Station 13.
I feel very happy to be able to help. They're gonna have a big turkey and they're gonna be able to enjoy it with their family.
Of course Thanksgiving isn't just about the food that we eat, it's about so much more.
I'm grateful for a happy life and that my mom gives me a gift and takes care of me. And she loves me, she takes care of me, she makes me food. My whole family does that, and they always will be in my heart.
Turning now to another group that gives back to the community. The LAPD spends a lot of time reaching out to kids to help set them on the right track. As Gil Reyes reports, champions of community outreach were recently honored at a Tinseltown Gala.
Thank you for every single person in law enforcement for what you do for us and our community every single day.
She plays forensic scientist Abby on the crime fighting drama NCIS. But on this night, at this LAPD gala, actress Polly Perret is honored for real for her charity work and outspoken support for the LAPD Hollywood Division.
I studied sociology, psychology, and criminal science in college, and I wanted to be a cop. But something else happened, and now I have this great job. But I still continuously support my police and my law enforcement friends, especially our Hollywood Division. We have, as far as community policing goes, it's a model for the rest of the country.
This past August, for example, Hollywood Division officers took at-risk kids to go shopping for free school supplies. The Hollywood Police Activities League hosted the ceremony honoring the best in community outreach. The league serves 600 kids every year. Proceeds from the dinner benefit youth programs. Also honored, Hollywood Division Sergeant Daryl Davis for his dedicated relationship building with area youth.
I coach when I'm away from the job. I coach baseball, I coach football, and the youth is everything for us. They're the up-and-comers. And if we're able to reach out to them and have it where they're able to bond and be part of us, you know, it's a great thing.
The hallmark of community policing. In Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
LA City Fire Department Inspector Eugene Andrews was also honored with a Community Leadership Award. Andrews, who works closely with Hollywood officers, was on vacation and unable to attend. Well, it's the largest Native American event of its kind in the country. The 26th Annual American Indian Arts Marketplace brought the art of Native tribes from all over the country to Southern California. Anna Marcos takes us there.
If you ever imagined what it'd be like to stay in a teepee, here's your chance. Teepies, Kachina dolls, and all things Native American were on show at the annual American Indian Arts Marketplace at the Autry Museum of the American West.
Mainly I carve my zita, and this one right here represents water is life.
The Autry's mission is to tell the diverse stories of the American West. And so we get to share culture and community with all of Southern California.
Visitors came to buy, to look, and to experience. And whether you were here for the artwork, the way of life, or the jewelry, you got the perspective of some 200 Native American artists representing 40 tribes across the country.
I'm Navajo, right? That's what we're known for, jewelry, making jewelry.
This is an abstract mixed in with the wildlife as a subject matter. And I like my hummingbirds because it's good luck.
I like people, when they get excited when they see my wood carvings, that kind of brightens up my day.
We heard there was even Indian fry bread. But if you missed it, there will be a chance to commune with the Native spirits again next year. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The event also included children's activities, Native American demonstrations, films, and a short play festival. Well, if your child likes to read, then you're one of the lucky ones. But many other kids may not like to read as much because they don't have access to books, especially since public library book budgets have been plummeting since 1989. But with November being National Family Literacy Month, one Los Angeles elementary school will be able to open a new chapter when it comes to reading. Rasha Goel has more.
Students at Wadsworth Elementary School can now experience the joy of reading at their school library thanks to Access Books, a nonprofit organization that refurbishes elementary school libraries in underserved communities at no cost to the school.
We're very excited, very thankful to Access Books for choosing our school to provide more resources in the form of books and library books in our school, and giving our library a nice, you know, facelift, if you may have it, yes.
Kids just need to be surrounded by good books because that's how you learn to read. The best predictor of how well you read is access to books.
And that's something many of these underserved communities are lacking and yearning for.
We didn't have a lot of books, and we're getting at least 1,000 new books for the kids to enjoy. New, up-to-date books. We haven't bought any up-to-date books in a while, so they would love that.
Dozens of volunteers, teachers, parents, and kids, including former students, came to help out with book organizing and mural painting. Among them was Demarius Macias, a former student.
I would also kind of get bored because there wouldn't be new books that we could check out. And now I'm kind of happy because my brother comes to the school so he could check out new books.
I think it is important because sometimes when you go on the internet and you want to search up history, it's not always true, and in the books it's sometimes true.
Officials say at least 90% of the children served by Access Books live in poverty, and many have never owned a book. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Access Books has now refurbished over 300 school libraries. And in addition to books, libraries also offer a wide range of learning tools. One program at a city library allows you to check out not only books, but toys too, in one kit. As Gil Reyes reports, doubling the pleasure of learning.
Storytime is just part of the fun for preschoolers at Panorama City Branch Library. There's also playtime. And when it's time to go, parents can now take home both in one package.
It's a plastic backpack, a clear plastic backpack that you can see through, and inside there is a toy and a related book. They encourage language-rich play between parents and children because the more words a child hears before starting kindergarten, the better prepared they are and the better they do in school.
Children's librarian Beth Gallego and coworkers at Panorama City Branch came up with the idea of literacy play kits. One book, for example, is entitled Stick. It's about a frog that gets stuck to a dragonfly, and together they travel to faraway places.
And the toy that's with those books are these blocks that have suction cups on them so that they actually stick together.
Back home, Alma Rodriguez and her daughter Yoltsen recreate the character's sticky situation with blocks, laughing, bonding, and talking about it.
With building blocks, if they're different colors, they can talk about this is a red block, this is a blue block, I have three red blocks. How many blocks do I have now? And they can count them, and they can do colors, and they can sort, and all of those basic concept activities.
Rodriguez says playing with reading is helping her daughter learn English.
I translated. I have to read it first in English and then I'll translate it. So she's getting her vocabulary from there. It's pretty amazing, and I hope we could have more of these resources around.
Now, these play kits can be checked out for a week at a time. Must be returned here to the circulation desk and not the book drop box. And please make sure you include all the pieces when you return them because the library will check. For now, happy reading and playing. From the Panorama City Branch, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Now, literacy play kits can be checked out at no cost if you have a library card. If you don't have one, get your card today to check out the kits and so much more. And those library kits are now available to more families as the program expands to other parts of the city. A Scramble Crosswalk installed a year ago gets positive results, while a new street light in another part of town helps improve safety for drivers and pedestrians. All these stories in City B. Library play kits are now also available at the Arroyo Seco Regional Branch, which recently debuted them during a sing-along storytime. Just like the Panorama Branch, families can select from 100 circulating activity kits, each of which includes a book, related toys, and a list of suggested activities in a transparent, child-friendly backpack. The learning kits are designed to engage parents and their children in the five early literacy practices like talking, reading, singing, writing, and playing.
All of those things are important markers of success.
The Office of Council District 13 and the Department of Transportation announced that the intersection of Hollywood and Highland, one of the city's busiest intersections, has seen significant safety benefits one year after the installation of a pedestrian safety improvement. LAPDOT says there have been zero pedestrian collisions since a new Scramble Crosswalk was installed at the intersection. The special crossing system allows everyone to enter the roadway from each corner in all directions, including diagonally. Officials say the Hollywood Scramble has created a safer environment and has enhanced the pedestrian experience. Local students, community members, and LAPD recently gathered to celebrate the installation of a traffic signal along North Main and Seychelle Streets on the border of Lincoln Heights and Boyle Heights. From January 2010 through October 2016, there have been four pedestrian and bicyclist collisions along North Main Street. There are also several schools near the intersection which is used by hundreds of students every day. Officials say that while the new signal will greatly improve public safety and traffic flow along this busy corridor, drivers and pedestrians still need to stay alert. Officers from the LAPD's Olympic Station presented 14-year-old Katie Amador with a new bicycle to replace the one that was stolen on her birthday in October. The officers took up a collection after the girl and her mother went to the station to report the crime. Reaching the age of 90 is certainly something to be proud of. It's a milestone that deserves to be celebrated, and the city pulled out all the stops. Rasha Goel has more.
Genevieve Flavian is 103 years old and one of the honorees at the city's Department of Recreation and Parks' annual 90-plus Legacy Luncheon. When I asked her the secret to a long, happy life, she said... She's among the many seniors over the age of 90 being celebrated and honored. Like the other seniors here, she is a member of the Los Angeles Federation of Senior Citizens Club.
The function of the clubs is to create some inclusiveness throughout the seniors, a social kind of circle for them to have, trips that they can take on their own, events that they can plan at our centers, special events, dances. These are for seniors who want to remain active, they have a place they can go and socialize.
91-year-old John Mandich has been a member of the Senior Citizens Club for 25 years. Anyone age 50 and older can join.
What we enjoy most about it is the friendship with all the people that we meet there and people that we knew when we were youngsters and have grown up with them and through high school and so forth. And also, my wife loves the bingo.
There were 260 seniors over the age of 90 and six seniors over the age of 100 at this event. Now, age did not keep these seniors from having a good time.
A lot of seniors are home, they have family, but they basically stay home. So this gets them out, they get dressed up for the event, they enjoy it. And when they leave, I've heard, "See you next year."
Well, I couldn't leave without getting advice from 100-year-old Betty and 102-year-old Maury Markoff, who have been married for 78 years. A little love and some laughter can go a long way. And these seniors once again prove that age is just a number. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
If you love holiday lights, then you'll love watching them glow and sparkle on the LA Harbor waterfront. Find locally-made arts and crafts at a unique crafts fair, and grab your family and friends for an evening of skating in downtown LA. All this and this week's things to do. Los Angeles Harbor sparkles with holiday lights during the Free and Festive Holiday Afloat Parade. Officials and community leaders will take part in the parade as judges or passengers on approximately 60 boats parading along the LA waterfront. Participating vessels will be of all shapes and sizes, including powerboats, sailboats, tall ships, and harbor-working craft. There are several viewing locations affording spectators unencumbered views of the elaborately decorated boats and the opportunity for friends and family to join in on the celebration. Check it out on Saturday, December 3rd at 6:00 PM at the Port of LA. For more, visit LHarborHolidaysAfloat.org. Described as the largest "Made in America" shopping event in the country, the annual Unique USA Holiday Market features clothes, accessories, and art pieces from a number of quality handmade brands. Check out local products and rub elbows with the different designers and artists showcasing their work. Take a break with locally-made food, plus free drinks, snacks, and photo booth portraits. It all takes place on Saturday, December 3rd and Sunday, December 4th at the California Market Center located at 110 East 9th Street in downtown. For more, visit UniqueMarkets.com. The annual LA Kings Holiday Ice brings outdoor ice skating to LA Live's Microsoft Square. Skate around the dazzling Christmas tree that stands in the middle of this outdoor rink and take in an LED holiday light show on the huge screens around the plaza. The ice rink is open through January 7th. It's located at 800 West Olympic Boulevard. For more info, visit LALive.com/events. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityB.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
The history of American railroad dates back as far as the early 1800s. Over the next century, railroad workers installed over 200,000 miles of tracks all over the country. In the early days, trains were primarily used to transport goods and livestock. However, in May 1869, that all changed when the railheads of the Union Pacific and the Central Pacific Railroads finally met at Promontory Summit in Utah. People could now travel across the country in a matter of days, something that previously took weeks, sometimes months. In no time, plans were made for a train station in Los Angeles. Soon enough, construction began, and finally, in May of 1939, Union Station opened its doors to the public. The station took over service from La Grande Station and Central Station, and originally served the Atchison, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railway, Southern Pacific Railroad, and Union Pacific Railroad, as well as the Pacific Electric Railway and Los Angeles Railway. Conceived on a grand scale, Union Station became known as the last of the great railway stations built in the United States. It was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1980. Union Station was partially designed by John Parkinson and Donald B. Parkinson, who had also designed Los Angeles City Hall and other landmark Los Angeles buildings. They were assisted by a group of supporting architects, including Jan van der Linden. The structure combines Dutch colonial revival architecture, mission revival, and streamlined modern style with architectural designs such as the Eight Pointed Stars. The station's first timetable listed 33 arrivals and 33 departures daily. What people found here was more than transit, it was travel, it was train. With 16 tracks, Union Station quickly became a hub for citizens and stars alike. Union Station saw heavy use during World War II when troops were mobilized as there were nearly 30,000 travelers who passed through Union Station daily. After the war, many soldiers returned from battle by train and were reunited with their families at Union Station. Trains were not only reliable, they were romanced. In those days, trains had names like Sunset Limited and the Super Chief, the big, powerful liner that coupled the coasts from Los Angeles to New York. Union Station also served as a popular location for filming and has been featured in movies such as Blade Runner, Dead Men Don't Wear Plaid, In the Mood, and Union Station starring William Holden and Nancy Olsen. Today, Union Station is completely revived. There are over 60,000 travelers who walk through the station daily, and it continues to undergo historical restoration. From all of us here at MetroLink to the Grand LA Union Station, happy 75th birthday. Here's to the next 75.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they are going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Special or public comment on items that are not on council's agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so why don't we move to our presentation? So I would like to recognize Mr. Bob Bloomingfield at this time.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Mr. President, colleagues, I have an amazing woman here to honor. Mr. President, you'll remember her from being at the Boys and Girls Club recently. So...
Yes, I do remember her. She's a... she gives orders. You follow, I follow. Yes, I won't forget you, ever.
Things will never change.
So colleagues, today we're talking about and we're here to honor Jan Sobel. On the occasion, the sad occasion of her retirement from the position of President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club of the West Valley. This is an organization that does amazing work all over, but the West Valley Boys and Girls Club in my district has just been stellar, and I'm so proud to be associated with them and to work with them on lots of issues. Slightly more than 10 years ago, then-chairman-elect Gary Thomas approached Jan Sobel regarding the position. And, you know, she may have been hesitant at the time, but we are very thankful in the West Valley, and particularly in the 3rd District, that she accepted that position. And she has worked hard within the organization with the board leadership. As evident, we have the board chairman with us here, Marty Cooper, also an amazing person who devotes his time and energy to the youth and of our valley and to much more. So she's worked with the leadership to make things happen in the San Fernando Valley. During her tenure with the Boys and Girls Club, there's been some significant statistics and improvements that have happened. The membership has doubled. The number of sites has grown from two to eight. The club has quadrupled the size of its board. The biggest challenge for any nonprofit is achieving and maintaining financial stability. And under Jan's leadership, the club eliminated its budget deficit, something I'm very close to, having been the budget chair, always working on deficit. It is not easy, and to do it with an organization that faces these challenges that it does, raising the money every year, is an amazing feat. She created financial reserves, tripled its annual operating budget. This required managing successful fundraising campaigns, tightening the belt, and doing what a good nonprofit executive does, which is take stewardship of that organization and make things happen. That's... and you look up excellent nonprofit CEO in the dictionary, you open it up and you see Jan's face. Now, she accomplished this while greatly expanding the Boys and Girls Club's reach. During her tenure, the club purchased a 2,500-square-foot building to be used as a teen center, and they renovated the main clubhouse. Would have been easy to stick to the job as it is with the building and the footprint, but she's always pushing the envelope and making it better for our kids. She also conducted organized and organized numerous events, developed and produced award-winning marketing materials. Her ability to juggle everything, from financial matters to maintenance issues, programming details, to fundraising strategies, am I making your stomach turn as I mention all the different things that you actually had to... From local community outreach to relationships with the National Boys and Girls Club of America, this is what sets her apart. And on top of all that, she always found the time to look at the big-picture issues and the policy issues, and to get engaged where it impacted youth and impacted the Boys and Girls Club. A great example is when we were dealing with the minimum wage issues. She came to me and said, "This is great what you're doing in City Hall, but look over here, this could have a major impact. We need to have some sort of on-ramp." And we worked together over and with the council president and others to try to smooth that road out, so we could get to that good policy, but we could do it in a way that was sensitive to the Boys and Girls Club and their needs, as well as other nonprofits that had similar issues. Now, she's received numerous accolades and awards, so not that, of course, today is going to be the top, not just because it's upon your retirement, but many things, from the San Fernando Valley Business Journal's Best Not-for-Profit CEO, Woman of the Year from Assembly Member Matt DeBobney, Executive of the Year in the Russell E. Pettit Excellence in Leadership Award from the Western Association of Chamber Executives. I could go on and on. But she currently serves on the board of the valley. She also serves on the VICA, which is, as we all know, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, where she successfully served four years as the co-chair of the VICA Government Affairs Committee. And she's a board member of the Vision to Learn Foundation, the Los Angeles Boys and Girls Club Alliance, the Economic Alliance of the San Fernando Valley, and the West Valley Police Boosters. This is someone who just makes time out of the day, takes 24 and makes it into 46 hours a day. And while the Boys and Girls Club is going to miss Jan's leadership, she's going to be around. We're not letting her leave too... go too far. She's going to be available to assure a smooth transition over the course of the next 30 years. We expect that. But we really wish her happiness and good health and fulfilling your retirement and all your dreams. And we want... I wanted you to be here today so that it's not just me, your council member and local booster who's honoring you today, but I have here a certificate that's signed by the mayor and every member of this council to honor you on this great occasion. So, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, thank you.
Thank you.
Skip Jan around. You definitely deserve it, and it's such a pleasure to see you again. And I was so impressed at the event that you guys had and honored that you would ask me to participate.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you very much. It's been an amazing ride.
Ignore it.
Oh, sorry. So as... and I absolutely know there are a couple of Boys and Girls Club alumni in the room, so you know how much this means to a community. But we have changed the lives of more than 20,000 children in my tenure, 20 years. We at the club will be celebrating its 25th anniversary next year, and I just want to thank you. It's been my absolute pleasure, and from the bottom of my heart, it's been an amazing opportunity to help so many kids and their families. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's start out. We're going to go into a public comment. We're going into our multiple comments section. Mr. Previn on items four, five, six, and then you have your general public comment. I thought I saw Mr. Previn earlier. Please come forward, sir.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Eric Previn from CD2. Today, item four caught my attention because I think we have Geller from City Attorney's Office having a look-see at the Election Code for Fire Commissioners, which they're making a few improvements, and obviously he's done an excellent job of taking a careful look at it. This is for the Fire and Police Commission, actually, the Board of Fire and Police Pension Commissioners, to be very specific. And then, what I was wondering is on item five and six, which have to do with neighborhood council elections. Each of them have a different piece. It's a motion from Krikorian and you, sir, to address some of the irregularities that occurred during the election, the last one, I think in April. And I guess my concern is where the city attorney... this is Mr. Faubel today. Dion has moved on, but Mike Fuhr I'm talking about, the real big city attorney who sits over all these departments, including the Neighborhood Council Group, which is the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. And during the election, I, you know, I was one of the many participants, there was great frustration. And we reached out to the city attorney, the kind of overseer of the law and the way we do it officially in government. And there was a silence, unfortunately, sir. There was a real silence and a lack of response to multiple... I mean, people on both sides of very contentious issues in neighborhood councils, and yet, nobody from City Attorney was home to help. It was very, very frustrating for all of us. And I think what this has now resulted in is an idea to ban electronic voting, which makes no sense, sir, because individual neighborhood councils should be able to... first of all, it's like a states' right issue. Should be able to choose for themselves, obviously, because some, I think I read in the supporting documentation, have already said that they had the best turnout ever and this, that, and the other thing. I'm sure those were the ones who won. But nonetheless, I think it's true that individuals should... individual communities should decide for themselves. And Grace Liu, who is the... I think she's the director of the whole Neighborhood Empowerment Group, should really focus her attention on the here and now of improving these things as opposed to, you know, sort of touting Neighborhood Empowerment around the world. I know she was just over in Spain, and I think it's important to help Mayor Garcetti with the sense that the Neighborhood Empowerment is working well, but I think we should actually focus on fixing it so it is working well, as opposed to boasting internationally about how great it's going. So, that said, in terms of the other, there was one other item there which had to do with electioneering. Obviously, electioneering is not proper, but we should have a system where the rules are very simple and clear for elections, for all of the neighborhood councils, so that they can respect the perimeters and understand what's happening and make sure that nobody is doing anything untoward in an election setting. Because, sir, as a guy who's been elected more than almost anyone in this room, you know that it has to be fair and equitable in America. And Bernie showed that, you know, that sometimes happens, sometimes doesn't happen, even though we, you know, he was trying very hard and looking for a fair... Is it now time for the general public?
Yes, can we give him his general public comment?
Okay, thank you, sir. For the general public comment, I just would like to remind you that there is a rule in your city rules, and Mr. Faubel will double-check this in a moment, called Rule 93. And Rule 93 requires that everybody at a meeting appear the same size in a government telecast of that, because it is the taxpayers who pay, and they're the ones who can't necessarily make it to every meeting, and they're the ones who have a right to hear from their fellow constituents and to discuss in the vibrant debate that is city government, the various matters. So to reduce, as you do at major city hall... today, you can sort of see me, and I'm oddly... oh, I'm oddly wearing a hat today, but that's not usual. But, you know, you can't really participate in these meetings if you are invisible. They say every recognized speaker must be shown the same. Well, you need to recognize a recognized speaker to know who's speaking. So I would ask you, sir, because you are widely credited with the authority, maybe Mr. Garcetti put that rule into place for some old, tired reason, but you are the one who can fix it, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Previn. And before we move forward, is it items two and three? We need to have an urgent forthwith vote on. So let's, on those two items, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Let's move on. Mr. Walsh, items four, five, six, and eight, I believe. And your... then at the end, your public comment. Yes, sir.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at HollywoodDMS. Check it out, it's very important today. We are going to be endorsing one of you up here for city council, I mean, for Congress. This issue is number four. Number four. This is administrative code, election of employees and retired members of the Fire and Police Pension Commission. Fire and Police Pension Commission is a mess, and we'll get about it. Next is the neighborhood council elections. Some of the neighborhood councils are crooked and some are straight. You have to check it... there are dozens and dozens of neighborhood councils. Some of them, I get applause. Number six, relative improving voting environment and election change process for future neighborhood councils. Some of the neighborhood councils are crooked, and this is an attempt at preventing the crookedness of these particular neighborhood councils. I don't need the full 1 minute 37 seconds, you can send it to hell. Number one is the... Brown-appointed Javier Becerra leaving a vacancy, a congressional vacancy. All of a sudden, John Perez is talking about running. There is only one person who should run and who will win, and that's Gil Sadio. He's the only one who lives in the district. We want Gil Sadio to run for the seat that's been vacated by Mr. Becerra. I want everyone to call his office, beg him to run, start running. He's Mr. Dream Act. Gil Sadio is the answer. Now, if he can win me over, he can win anybody over. He is, of course, the best of any of you up here, all 16 of you up here, 17 including the mayor. They want to keep this quiet. It's on the internet, but it's not at the... it's not in the open at the LA Times. There is enormous amount of pressure going on.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Spindler, items four, five, six, I think that's seven. Four, five, six, and seven, and then your general public comment.
Okay. Thank you. And everybody today, for wearing our masks to keep the gas out of our noses. So, now we have today a special motion for neighborhood council. The Lisa Sarkin amendments, yes. Who is Lisa Sarkin? She's the woman who was defeated. Oh, by the way, special guest Paul Carret's here. Give him a hand. Very good. Thank you. He did a good job the other day for trees. Okay, so now, Lisa Sarkin ran for the Studio City Neighborhood Council, and Eric Previn ran. Eric Previn won. And then, just like Hillary, Lisa Sarkin demanded a recount. And then, they held a puppet panel. I was there. I was one of the puppets on the commission, and of course, I voted for Eric Previn. And the reason I voted against Sarkin is because Sarkin's been down here for 49 years, and we need a new leader. So, now you're going to pass these terrible rules against people like me, well, puppets like me, and Eric Previn, and all these other people. But remember in Studio City, reelect Eric Previn, yes. Now, we have some other good things here. Parcel maps. You know what parcel maps are, folks? Parcel maps are free entitlements. Now, sure, you know, they pay fees. They call them Quimby fees. They're Quimby fees. In other words, these are fees you pay for developers to build parks, but they don't buy parkland. You know what they do with the Quimby fees? They take the Quimby fees and they simply pay interest on all the bonds, so none of us little animals get our parks. Terrible, terrible, terrible. And then, we have oversized vehicles. Well, that's because of the homeless. Over in future Congressman Gil Sadio's district, he doesn't like people living in mobile homes or the homeless. So in other words, and this is a good thing, when Sadio runs for Congress, he's going to run as a Republican, because he doesn't want homeless people living in Los Angeles. Although he is, give him a hand, he doesn't like homeless people. Let's say it together. We hate the homeless. We hate the homeless. Vote for Gil Sadio for Congress. Oh, okay, now, we get the public comment period. You have a lot of people here today. Aliso Canyon people, that's why the puppet wears a mask. That's why they're here today. And you have Mitchell Englander that doesn't do a goddamn thing for the constituents. We want justice for Aliso Canyon homeowners and people in Porter Ranch. These people, you settled for 12 lousy million dollars on SoCal gas. You people are bought and paid for by SoCal gas. So now, Sadio for Congress, we want you to shut down Aliso Canyon for good. If you do that, I'll endorse you, and I'll even give you a campaign donation. Yay!
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Okay, before we proceed, Madam Clerk, let's vote on items four and eight. Let's please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, Sean, please come up. Items five and seven, and then you have your public comment.
Yes, good morning, Mr. Sean Murphy, CD2. Item one is an item I support. Item number five, I support item number seven. General public comment. When you have your meetings here in Van Nuys, when it's windy and cold, you should not keep them outside for another 15 minutes. I argue with the officers, you should not keep them out when it's windy and cold. And I want to wish my fans here, that's living in Van Nuys, a happy holidays. I hope it's not too early. And my choir's having a concert December 11th at St. Charles at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, let's move now to item seven. Seven, I have Mr. Gus and Ms. Fogler, item seven.
Councilmembers, Daniel, Gus, you see my articles on City Watch LA and sometimes on the KFI Sunday Morning News. Councilmembers, you continue to do a millimeter's worth of effort when a yard needs to be done. You first restricted these vehicles in the wealthy, white, sometimes Jewish neighborhoods, and gradually, the problem migrated towards the poorer communities, like Mr. Sadio's community. Now, you're banning overnight, overnights in large vehicles as opposed to small vehicles. Why are you treating only the symptom and not the cause of the cold to begin with? Why are you doing this vehicle by vehicle, street by street, district by district, rather than addressing the problems? The problem with Los Angeles City Council and government in general is that you only move the ball by millimeters instead of addressing the problem.
Thank you, sir. So if I could have Ms. Fogler, please come forward on item seven.
If we didn't have Sanctuary City, we wouldn't have this issue coming up, number seven. We have all this homeless people coming here from the world, and we just don't have the resources to handle it. So you people, you need to get back to basics, okay? We need to have immigration, and that is Trump, and that what we need is Trump now. So what you're doing here with the vehicles is obviously a issue that has to be dealt with, cannot be just put under a rug and just, you know, and just have it taken care of, like that, you know? You got to resolve it. We need to allow people to be able to... how should I say this? Be able to park their cars, but we shouldn't have homelessness, okay? That should not be an issue, and that should not be people coming here from the world, from our borders, outside our borders. We don't have to support them.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's move to, in fact, Mr. Carretts.
We're going to open the roll on item number seven, close the roll, tally the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Now, we're going to take item number five. The first speaker on item number five is Lisa Sarkin.
What item am I speaking on?
Item number five.
Just that one?
Yes.
Thank you. Lisa Sarkin, past president of the Studio City Neighborhood Council. Today, I'm speaking for myself. On item number five, I support the motion, the Studio City Neighborhood Council stakeholders were confused by everything relating to our election. Dunn's incompetence in handling our voting process was unbelievable. No matter how many times we tried to notify them of what the problems were, nothing was repaired. I gave to you a bunch of paperwork, because there's no way I can talk to you in one minute, including a photograph of all of the documents that we printed out, so that we could show what went on back and forth, and nothing ever was changed. The complete confusion took over at the polling place on April 7th because of the online voting, in particular. People did not receive their codes. I received two active codes. I could have voted twice, so we had no idea how anything was supposed to be taken care of. Is that all I'm speaking on now?
Yes. Thank you. The next speaker is Eli Lippman.
Good morning. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the time. My name's Eli Lippman. I'm speaking as an individual, but I am a bond commissioner. And I wanted to come here today, I thought it was important to come to here today, because I actually very much support the notion of this motion. I've been asking for a report from the department for a couple of months now about the election, because I've heard some very positive things. As you'll see, there was two CISs that were submitted that said that the Palms Neighborhood Council, Glacell Park, and I spoke with Soro as well, as well as a number of other neighborhood councils, who've had very positive experiences with online voting. They've seen it increasing the amount of voters in their neighborhood. And then I've heard of very negative and some serious challenges, not only to registration, but access to vote, and those concern me. And as a commissioner, I want to see that report to know what happened, what all the information was, and what actions the department is going to take to improve the system. So very much, I agree with the sense of this motion, but I ask that the council reconsider the idea of ceasing the system itself. So I ask that you amend it.
Mr. Lippman, your time is up, my apologies. Before we take the next speaker, I will tell Mr. Spindler that you're distracting council members, making noises, waving a puppet around. If that continues, we're going to have to ask that you be removed. And that counts right now. Can we ask our sergeants to please remove Mr. Spindler from the room? Mr. Previn, you're also disrupting the meeting. I'd ask you to stop, I know you can. So we'll warn Mr. Previn as well. Christina Zitkunch. I apologize if I mangled your name, I'm not sure.
My name is Christina Zikovich. I'm in CD12. I actually came for the gas issue, but because this was on the agenda, I did want to make a comment about it. I'm supporting the motion because I registered online to vote at the neighborhood election, and I was confirmed, I gave all my information, I set my driver's license, and then I was never... then I was still not given a password. I then went back and called, I gave them my information again, still didn't get a password, but then I received emails from all the candidates that were running in the election. So even on the page where I did register to vote, there was no... nothing saying that my information was going to be passed out to all the candidates that were running, which I believe was 10 or 12. So you can only imagine all the emails that I got, pretty much spamming my account from all this stuff, and then I couldn't even register to vote. So I think the system really needs to be halted and looked at before you continue with other elections.
Thank you very much. Stu Miller, to be followed by Judy Price.
I know we're talking about item number five, but I'm going to speak on both five and six. I support both of the motions. I agree with Lisa Sarkin's comments. The level of Dunn's incompetence...
Please skip... stick to five, by the way, because we're taking... Please skip, stick to five, by the way, because we're taking six separately.
Pardon me?
Please, hold this time, please, please just address item five, because we'll take six separately.
Okay. The level of Dunn's incompetence in connection with the 2016 Neighborhood Council elections and other issues borders on malfeasance and should result in a complete housecleaning of the department personnel top to bottom. Their misbehavior goes to the very heart of the integrity of the Neighborhood Council system citywide. I remind the City Council, the Neighborhood Councils came into being to counter the threat of secession by the Valley, San Pedro, Hollywood, and other communities. If this isn't fixed, it could very well happen again.
Thank you very much. Judy Price, to be followed by Glenn Bailey.
Good morning, Judy Price. The integrity of all elections depends on the verifiability of the election. In the case of the Neighborhood Councils who had online voting, that was virtually impossible. I made a Public Records Act request for all ballot registration forms for both the poll and online voting for the Studio City Neighborhood Council election. I obtained copies of the paper registration and ballots filled out at the poll, but I was told there was no record of the online registrations, only a spreadsheet of the names of the voters. In other words, no record of the specific ballots received by the voter or their proof of eligibility, making it impossible to validate the election outcome. I provided for you copies of the final correspondence I had with Dunn, which pretty much sums up the results of my three months of back and forth. California law prohibits casting a ballot over the Internet with the primary purpose of safeguarding elections in the digital age. I have more, but I'll save it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price.
I have a card on this. You have a card.
Next speaker will be Glenn Bailey.
Glenn Bailey, speaking as an individual today. First of all, let me just state for the record that I support the concept of online voting, but there were some broken promises that hopefully you'll find out about. We were promised that we would be able to start the registration process at the annual Congress of Neighborhoods in September. In fact, it was more than two months later, a very big hit for the Valley that was first up in the election. We were promised outreach assistance, that person was fired and never replaced, and we weren't helped with that. We were promised that registered voters would be included in our database of stakeholders to be able to vote. That didn't happen. We were promised to be able to use Nation Builder for outreach, that didn't happen because they scrubbed the list of registered voters. We still don't know how much more than the $553,000 that was approved for this project was actually spent, and we have not been given a copy of the final contract despite Public Record Act request, so I renew that now to the City Council, the public act request-
Thank you, Mr. Bailey, unfortunately you're out of time. Thank you. Next speaker will be Miriam Paslik.
My name is Miriam Fogler. I think you're hass, you just like to hassle people and harass them, take away their rights. I just want to say that there is not legitimate voting going on here at the neighborhood council.
Excuse me, I have to respond that it was very hard to read your handwriting, so I didn't realize it was you, it doesn't look like Fogler.
I didn't know it wasn't written as well. I didn't, my friend did it. I, anyway, the elections here at the neighborhood councils are not well done, and it's going to have to come down, and I think the Valley is going to have to do succession, because I don't think the neighborhood councils are very good, they're not run properly, and the elections are done very badly. And from what I understand, now Glenn Bailey's saying all this stuff, I think it's very pertinent, we need to do a succession from downtown LA and have our own San Fernando Valley government. And that should be here every month, so that we don't have to go through all this jargon, all this stuff. Needs to be, this needs to be, we need a clean sweep here at City Hall, just like the federal.
Thank you. Donna Pearman.
Okay, well, I'm going to speak on number five, apparently online voting is not up to date equipment, or the counting is not up to date. Therefore, because we're behind electronically, I guess we have to get rid of electronic voting, which is a shame that we can't figure out a way to actually do the online, maybe on the site, so, you know. But apparently it can't be done that way, and I'm hoping to bring back Van Nuys videoconferencing, because it seems like you guys can come in whenever you feel like it, or, because you got rid of the last month's, the time. So anyway, so on the electronic voting, I hope we still have public comment. Anyway, online voting apparently can't be done, so I guess that's a good thing that you got rid of online voting, because you don't want to figure out a good way to do it online and make it easy for people, you want to make it hard. So that's life.
Thank you. Corinne Ho, to be followed by our last speaker, Jason Ackerman.
Mr. Corretts, council member, good morning. My name is Corinne Ho, I come from Council District Three, with Council Member Bob Blumenfeld. I'm here to, I'm the president of the Canoga Park Neighborhood Council, but here to speak for myself. The Canoga Park Neighborhood Council was one of the 34 Neighborhood Councils who opted for online voting. There is no question that there are obstacles to overcome, it was the first time ever that it was implemented, and, but we did have a good experience. I personally believe, and I know some of the, my fellow board members believe, that it is a future of civic engagement, especially if we want to tap into the youth, everybody's on cellphone now. So I don't think the question that we have to ask ourselves is, do we want online voting or not? But I hope that moving forward, what we're looking at is, how do we make this better? How do we make it more efficient? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jason Ackerman, our last speaker.
So, Jason Ackerman, Vice President of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, speaking as an individual today. So as Corinne just mentioned, yes, obviously we need, I mean, I think that saving online voting as a concept is a good thing, I think that maybe the vendor needs, that needs to be replaced, or that the city attorney needs to work with the vendor to get a better product for next cycle elections. You know, as to the support from Dunn, that is always lacking, and part of the issue is that this council has not properly funded that department and hired enough staff to do their job right. They're very stretched, there's 96 neighborhood councils, I think there's what, like, less, like around 20 staff members in that department, maybe less? So we definitely need to invest in online voting, and we need to strengthen security and maybe find a better vendor. Thank you.
Thank you, and we're going to hold item five and move on to item six. All right, we're going to take public comment on item six as well, and we will begin this one as well with Lisa Sarkin.
Lisa Sarkin, please read the documents that I gave you, it'll give you more explanation on what it is that we're trying to get you to do. I support this item. The council, the challenge process was a joke. The proceedings had no set rules, and the chairs commented at the start of the hearings, quote, "We are going by the seat of our pants," unquote. The 2016 election manual did not allow appeals of a decision made by a grievance panel, and then an appeal was allowed, which forced a second challenge hearing, reversing the original decisions and allowing additional information to be brought in, which also was prohibited by the 2016 election manuals, among other unbelievable irregularities. Dunn's job is to support the neighborhood councils, but when it went totally against the neighborhood council on all issues brought by stakeholders related to the 2016 election challenges. Dunn charged, changed the rules after the election season began and after the season was concluded. Dunn was not prepared for the process, they made it up as the challenges were filed.
I'm sorry, you're out of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Christina Zitkunch.
You said it right this time, thank you. My issue was, because of the mix-up with the online voting, I ended up going to a pop-up poll, which is a new thing done by Dunn, and it was the biggest joke I think I've ever seen in my life. I wish Mr. Englander was here, because it was actually his friends that hosted it, in the lobby of the Coldwell Banker and Toll Brothers building, with less than 24-hour notice to the public. And the owner of Coldwell Banker was able to pass out flyers and insist that his employees vote 15 feet away, and was making them vote, and they were irate and pissed off. I was mad because I had to, for like the third or fourth time, try to actually vote, but seeing the collusion, I actually did file a challenge with Dunn, which it was dismissed, because apparently at pop-up polls, you can electioneer within 15 feet of where the voting is taking place versus 100 feet at a regular polling location. Totally a huge mistake, complete collusion, and it was absolutely disgusting to be there.
Thank you. Judy Price, to be followed by Eli Litman.
Hi, Judy Price. First, I want to thank Paul for bringing these motions forth. It's been a long road here in terms of the problems with this past election. The problem with the grievance panels is that there's no established rules, and they end up changing the rules midstream. For example, the grievance panel hearing that was held for Studio City was on April 18, they came to a decision. Then Dunn revised the election manual on April 29th, which was like three or four weeks after the election. Then the rehearing, which of course this is supposed to be unappealable, they called for a rehearing on May 9th, and then they reversed the decision made at the original hearing. Now, the problem is, as I said, if we're going to have rules, we need to follow them. We can't be changing the rules halfway through an election, that is just unheard of. So I think this motion should be supported, there needs to be some established protocol for all grievance panels with Dunn. They, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Eli Litman, to be followed by Stu Miller.
Hello again, Eli Litman, speaking as an individual, and I also want to show my support for approval of this motion, I actually think it's a very good idea, I definitely think that we need better training for staff, we need to strengthen our neighborhood council election system, we need to strengthen the challenge system, because exactly as other speakers have said, if we don't have trust in the legitimacy of the election and the outcomes of it, then we're going to continue to have challenges and issues in neighborhood councils. So I think this is a very important motion, and I'm excited that Councilman Kocorian brought it forward, and I hope it gets approved, so thank you very much. And I'd like to just say, because I have 20 seconds, as a Commissioner on Bonk, I'd love to work with City Council and the City Attorney's Office to strengthen both the challenge process and the elections process, and so we want to be a partner on that, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Stu Miller, to be followed by Glenn Bailey.
I also want to thank Councilman Kocorian for bringing these motions forward, they were, in fact, long overdue. I happen to be the only person whose challenge was approved by Dunn, as, following the Studio City Neighborhood Council election. And my challenge was upheld unanimously by the original panel. I couldn't have been more surprised when, in spite of the fact that the election manual stated that there could be no appeal to such a decision, it was appealed. And on the second occasion, the decision that the panel made, the hearing panel made, was reversed. And this was under the direct supervision, I dare say interference, of Dunn, which operated in a very roguish manner. Again, this has to stop, we have to change this, and it's your job to do that. Thanks.
Glenn Bailey, to be followed by Jason Ackerman.
Glenn Bailey, this time I'm speaking as President of the North Regis Neighborhood Council, which voted unanimously to support this motion, so thank you, Councilmember Kocorian, for introducing these. I will, they were introduced five months ago, and I don't really understand why we're, there hasn't been more detailed opportunities for input rather than one-minute comments, you know, five months or more after the fact for many of these things. On a personal note, I was a poll manager at the Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council, there were over 1,200 voters there. Before we opened the polls, I asked how many of the city-assigned workers, including paid by the city, had A, taken the poll worker training, none of them had, B, how many of them had worked at a documentation election, none of them had. So this motion underscores that problem when, and that was the first election, but they should come in prepared, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Jason Ackerman, to be followed by Miriam Fogler, and then Donna Pearman as the last speaker.
All right, so this motion, I totally support. Dunn definitely needs better training to handle elections, and the staff that were hired to manage the polls need better training. I for one am rather excited about the proposition of moving the elections to the city clerk, who seems to know how to run elections a lot better. You know, the integrity of the elections are crucial to the integrity of the system of the neighborhood councils, as we've heard. So I appreciate the innovation of the pop-up polls, I think that's a neat idea, but I think that we need better enforcement against electioneering, as was brought up, 15 feet is definitely way too close to the polls, it used to be 100 feet from a pop-up poll, regardless of where that poll pops up. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam Fogler.
I'm a ardent attendant of the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council, and I can tell you, it's like a zoo when I see them doing the elections. I don't think Dunn knows what they're doing, okay? There's people over there that obviously are very biased towards certain people, and I just don't like the way the elections are being run, and I think it's all corrupt, just like, you know, the recount is ridiculous, what's going on now, and it's got to stop. We got to take back our valley and make it its own city and run our own business here in the valley and forget about downtown LA, never depend on Dunn Dunn. Let's stop going to city clerk to depend on these elections, it's, let's just have our own city, let's do succession, thank you.
Thank you. Donna Pearman.
I would say, though, you have to be very careful, make the rules simple, so we don't want to have it show, it's, we want to know if a legatearing, if somebody's even doing in the first place, because unfair allegations could be said by, done by innocent people running and helping and running the election by people who want someone else. These things could be false, and they could just do it just because he or she wants somebody else, and so you really have to be careful, and when we put down saying legatearing to make sure it's even done in the first place. And as I said, I agree with Miriam, I love to be able to see ballots succeed, because apparently you don't care to bring back video conferencing, so we can come over here and speak much, just every two months or four months, whenever you feel like being here. So anyway, let's see if there's any problem with legatearing in the first place, thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, I know the city attorney wanted to mention something as well.
Yes.
Mr. President, I believe the council is on item number six.
All right, so your comment was on item five, so there are no speakers on the queue on item six, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Ten eyes.
And let's now go back to item- And let's now go back to item five and ask the city attorney to say something as well.
Yes, thank you. They -- we circulated and posted an amending motion. It's non-substantive. It's just clarifying the timing of the report back from Dunn.
Thank you. And that amendment has been circulated?
Yes, Mr. President. It has.
Council members have had an opportunity to look it over. Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'd just like to clarify a couple of points because I know some members were concerned, and Commissioner Lippman had expressed some concern about disrupting the process of online voting. About seven years ago, not quite seven years ago, when I was elected to the council and became education and neighborhoods chair, I started working on how we can make our election process better for neighborhood councils, how we can ensure that we have greater participation, how we can ensure that these elections are fair, transparent, engaging, and somewhat professional to ensure there's some degree of accountability. And we've made some strides, and online voting as a concept certainly is a vehicle by which, ideally, we will be able to expand participation in our neighborhood council elections, which I think in too many parts of our city is abysmal right now. Participation is abysmal. And so if we can take steps to expand participation, that's a good thing. However, when we initiated online voting in neighborhood councils, it was with the clear understanding that this was going to be a pilot program, that we were going to learn from our experience, and then we were going to improve upon it, as many of the speakers requested here today. Well, unfortunately, the valley is the first out of the door on any change in neighborhood council elections, and many of the experiences that you heard today indicate the change is needed. And some of the -- if you read some of the statements that are before you, you'll realize the gravity of some of the errors that were made, some of the breaches of online security that were made, exposing our constituents' personal information to the world on the internet, things that we just can't tolerate as a city. And so what this motion asks for Dunn to do is come back to us with the report that honestly should have been done long ago anyway, evaluating this experience. Come back to us in 30 days with a report about potential improvements in security and the other issues that are set forth in the motion so that before the next round of online elections begin, we as a council can make a determination as a policy matter, does it make sense to continue this experiment? And if so, under what conditions? Under what conditions to guarantee security, to guarantee fairness, to guarantee accountability? So with that, you have an amending motion that's been circulated, and with that amendment, I would ask for your aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. And I would add, I had the opportunity to brainstorm with Councilmember Joel Wax and others, the original creation of neighborhood councils. And it is somewhat surprising to me that even at this late date, we still have a process that has been as flawed as it has and allowing inappropriate electioneering and other steps that need to be corrected. And I appreciate Mr. Kocorian's action to help us go down that road, and hopefully, relatively soon, we will have a process that we all can be proud of and without the kind of flaws that it has. Mr. Wesson.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and members. I rise to compliment Mr. Kocorian on all his work on this issue. I have had the fortune, the good fortune, to travel throughout the city of Los Angeles, meeting with several neighborhood council members, again, throughout the entire city. And I get two major complaints. One is the accounting processes that they have to go through, and the other one is where it relates to the elections and the challenges. So I think that we want to take a serious look at this. I know that I have committed, and I think this action here is an appropriate way to begin. So I commend Mr. Kocorian for his work and for being a supporter and keeping an eye on the neighborhood councils, even though he has another job now with budget and finance, and it's busy, but he's been a good ally on these issues from the moment that he was elected. So I'm excited. Ask for an aye vote, and I think this really will move us in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Also, Mr. Blumenfield.
I just want to echo the concerns. Thank you, Mr. Kocorian, for bringing this forward. And online is the future. I mean, this is where we're going with voting for neighborhood councils, and this is where we're going to go for voting with city councils. So it's important that we get it right, and, you know, this provides the experimentation to do it, to stop, assess, and move it forward. But I just wanted to echo and say, you know, I see our North Star where we're going on this, and I think we all agree, we're going in the direction of more interactivity and more online and more access for folks to participate voting in neighborhoods and ultimately in city elections. So I rise in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. With no other speakers on the queue, let's open the vote on item number five, close the vote, and tally the results.
Ten ayes.
Ten ayes. That item has passed. Now let's move on to general public comment, beginning with Glenn Bailey.
Glenn Bailey, this is on. Glenn Bailey, again, speaking as president of the North Regis Neighborhood Council. I wanted to report to this council with regards to the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility that the North Regis Neighborhood Council passed a motion as follows, that we support the permanent closure of SoCal Gas Company's Aliso Canyon storage facility, subject to Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council taking the same position, and to authorize the North Regis Neighborhood Council president to communicate our position to the Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council to include this position in their correspondence. That passed 1001, and that communication was sent by the president. That's me. So I appreciate your support of the permanent closure of their storage facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Matt, I think it's Pachuko, you would say, Porter Ranch. Andrea Leon Grossman, please come forward. Judy Price.
Mr. President, just for the record--
Yes.
--the ordinances today will be carried over one week to December 9th.
Thank you for that clarification. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Matt Pachuko, president and co-founder of Save Porter Ranch. We represent thousands of local area residents. Regarding that Aliso Canyon facility, I noticed that Mr. Englander is not here today. Unfortunately, he's been missing in action regarding our problem, so I think it's time for the rest of the council to step up. This is an LA city issue. Twenty of those wells are on LA city property. Only four of them passed the recent inspections. That means 16 of them have not been deemed safe. And approximately, according to SoCal Gas, 24,000 LA city residents had to be relocated during the blowout. So this is in your jurisdiction to at least make a motion to ask the state to keep that place permanently shut down. There have been ongoing health problems reported, continual reported leaks, unknown number of unreported leaks. We know that because we have our own methane monitoring system up there. Four fires that we know of, including that big one a few weeks ago. The only way is that you guys can keep the constituents of LA city safe is to support a motion to shut that facility down. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward and identify yourself.
Good morning. My name is Andrea Leon Grossman, and I'm an organizer with Food and Water Watch. I'm here to talk about Aliso Canyon, and this storage facility keeps being a dangerous issue for the city. There is not such thing as a safe oil and gas facility, and this facility needs to be shut down. Thousands of residents are still getting sick. Aliso Canyon is not necessary for energy reliability. We just have the warmest year and the warmest summer this year, and it was not necessary. So it needs to be shut down. I am urging the council to introduce and pass a motion in favor of decommissioning the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility and reject SoCal's application to reopen it. We are counting on your leadership to close this facility permanently, and I hope you listen to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. So I think it's Sue, last name Sue, from Eagle Ridge Lane, and then I'm looking for Christina, I believe, Zee from Nashville, if you'd come forward. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Judy Price. I know it's expedient to have one minute for a speaker comment, but honestly, guys, it's really not and gals. It's not fair. You know, if somebody's going to speak on a number of items, perhaps you can limit them to one minute. But for some of us who come for one or two items, I think at the bare minimum, we should be allowed two minutes. It's very impossible, and we end up feeling like jerks standing here trying to race through a minute of testimony. So I would ask you, please reconsider the time allocation. If you limit it, just limit it to everybody, somebody who comes and speaks every time and on everything. I also don't like the lumping. I didn't understand the beginning of the agenda when you lumped agenda items. I hope that that's not a frequent occurrence because it's really important that we speak after, you know, you've introduced the item. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I could get the people I called, and I'll be looking for a Mayra Soto and Felipe Escobar. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. My name is Shinai Xu. I live in the Porter Ranch. Regarding the Aliso Canyon gas, it affects our past, current, and future health, especially for the major vision problem. Many residents, I experienced some of the vision problem as when we wake up, we couldn't open my eye because the bacteria covers our eye. Even we clean that, and we couldn't see. And then we have to go to the eye doctor for urgent care. And the second thing that is the cause of fire, several years ago, Sessno's, the major fire, and also several years, several weeks ago, is caused the Porter Ranch fire. It's also that because the gas company. The third point, that is, Porter Ranch--
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. If I could get the next speaker, and I'm looking for Coyoto Hibino, Mr. Gus, Sandy Minasia. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Christina Zitkovich. I actually came from Chatsworth today. I was able to be here at nine o'clock in the morning. I actually live further than Mr. Englander. He lives in Granada Hills. I was able to make it to the meeting, and here's his seat empty. The last time I came to talk about Aliso Canyon was downtown, and I believe it took me an hour and 20 minutes to get there, and again, his seat was empty at that point. So as much as a single mom who owns a small business in Los Angeles County, I cannot afford to keep taking days off of work and have an empty seat to talk to. It's really not fair. I don't know what stories. Do you want me to tell you how my daughter, two weeks ago, got a migraine and threw up at school, which is documented? She never had migraines before the gas leak. Should I talk about yesterday morning that there was gas out in front of my house? I thought it was a skunk. I wasn't sure. I confirmed with 10 residents in Chatsworth, within a three-and-a-half-mile radius, that there was a smell. It took the inspector one hour to come to the house, and the smell dissipated. So what needs to happen before you guys step up? Because obviously, our councilman doesn't give a crap about what's going on in his community.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could get the -- sir, please come and identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Felipe Escobar. Maya Soto, she's on her way, by the way, FYI. She was supposed to speak before me.
Well, just keep going.
Okay. My name's Felipe Escobar. Good morning, members of the council. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Don Waste Telecollision, and I want you to support the zero-waste policy that it was actually supposed to be talked about this Wednesday by ENE, by the council. So I'm here to urge you to support this policy because as a committee member who lives in the northeast San Fernando Valley, my nephew goes to a school that's nearby one of these waste facilities. It makes me sad to think like every day he has to go to a school, he's breathing dirty air. I appreciate y'all know that in Pacoima, we have one of the highest asthma rates in the whole state. So it's an injustice that if we delay this policy, vulnerable communities such as children's and elderly will have to continue bearing these issues of pollution. And so please support this policy.
Thank you. So if I could get the next speaker, please identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Kyoko Hibino.
Yes.
I live in Porter Ranch. Seven months of displacement from my home and having a continuous health issue was the most miserable time of my life. I still suffer nosebleeds and headaches now, and SoCal Gas operation is not safe. Ever since the blowout, there are five reported oil and chemical spill, four fires, and there are still leaks. They only inspect 114 vintage wells. If small amount of leaks is allowed from the wellhead and methane migration from the ground and not being measured and reported, how many small leaks from SoCal Gas, 160 wells and 3,600 acres facility over the decades will create air pollution. How many of residents have to suffer from the poison and living with a fear forever for long-term health impact? If we don't know the amount of poison spilled from the facility, does it make you okay to--
Thank you. So I guess after Mr. Gus, I want Sandy Minasia, Miss Minasia, and Deidra Bolana, please come forward. Yes, sir.
To the people here on Aliso Canyon today, I will remind you that you re-elected Mitch Englander to that empty seat unopposed. If you are sick of the gas in the air, if you are sick of a quarter of your home value dissipating, stop re-electing incumbents to city council. You people put that empty chair there, and he's making $200,000 a year to not respond to your issues. If you have a problem with Englander, do a recall. Stop reappointing incumbents to these jobs that they don't deserve, and they don't care about you, your health, or your biggest asset. I will remind the council members, my story exposing fraud among fire inspectors at the LAFD was picked up by the LA Weekly and picked up by David Goldstein at KCBS. The other shoe has yet to drop. If you don't start recommending these fire inspectors for felony prosecution, I'm going to drop the other shoe.
Thank you, sir. So if I can get our next speaker, and after Deidra, is it Alori Avizian? Yes.
Good morning. My name is Sandy Minasian. I live in Porter Ranch here to speak about the Aliso Canyon wells. I've lived there for 16 years. I'm 1.7 miles away from the wellhead. We were greatly impacted by the leak. There have been several reportable leaks since. They've had very low pressure in the system. I can only assume that if they add more pressure to the system, there will be more leaks, larger and more regular. The system is just too old, antiquated. It hasn't been properly maintained. There are regular smells up there that smell like a burning skunk. I hear my neighbors talking about it. I've reported it to the AQMD several times. We don't know what they're doing. You don't know what they're doing up there. It's just not a good idea to have a facility like that so close to so many homes. I encourage you to vote to close this facility down. It doesn't belong there anymore. I'm the H2A president. I'm speaking as myself. However, several, most of my homeowners are in agreement with me on--
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also, if I could get in line, Marcia Hanscom and Alex Andrea, or is that Elekstra, Elektra Nagy? Yes. Alexandra Nagy? Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm here today to ask you to please make a motion to keep this dangerous facility shut down. As a Porter Ranch resident, living in the shadow of this Aliso Canyon storage facility for 17 years, my family has been forced to breathe the methane emissions that occur in all sectors of the natural gas industry through intentional vetting, venting, unintentional leaks, routine maintenance, and all parts of the infrastructure. My father, who lives with us, has terminal kidney cancer. Come to find out, the odorant mercaptan in the methane is filled with toxic chemicals, including trichlorethylene, which the NTP has determined is a known human carcinogen and causes, a cause of kidney cancer. Mitch Englander has closed his doors to our community, and we need your intervention. This is a life and death issue. We are asking for your help, since we are not receiving it from our councilman.
Thank you. Your name again?
Deirdre Bolonia.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Lori Avazian. My family's resided in Council District 12 in Porter Ranch for 17 years. It's a disappointment not to have-- 17 years. It's a disappointment not to have Mitchell Englander here today to hear our concerns. Our home is located 1.9 miles from the Aliso Storage Canyon, Aliso Canyon Storage Facility. Our lives and health were terribly impacted by the blowout of SS-25. We were driven from our home and relocated for six months by the poison spoon from the facility. Once we moved home in June, we and our pets continue to suffer symptoms of headaches, bloody noses, respiratory systems, and rashes. We still often smell mercaptans and other chemicals emanating from the facility. In fact, yesterday, I and many others called the South Coast Air Quality Management District to report a horrendous burning chemical smell emanating from the facility. The lives and health of tens of thousands of your constituents are at risk if this facility starts reinjecting gas at high pressure. The facility's had four reportable leaks and three fires since the blowout.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I can add to our line, Patricia Larcava, Hannah Benet. Yes.
Honorable council members, Marcia Hanscom, I'm Executive Director of the Biuna Institute, and I chair the Sierra Club Biuna Wetlands Restoration Committee. I'm here because we have a sister gas storage facility underneath the Biuna Wetlands, and we're very, very similar. It was built around the same time with the same antiquated storage facility. And I'm here in full support and solidarity with our people here from Porter Ranch. Would like to see this completely shut down. Southern California Gas Company has, has applied to reopen this, and there will be a full hearing after the first of the year. And that's partly why we're here to ask you to please pass a resolution, as the LA Unified School District has, that says you would like to see this not reopened, and that you would like to decommission this facility. It's leaking right now, even though there isn't gas being pumped in.
Thank you. Thank you. So if I could have the next speaker?
Good morning. My name is Alexandra Nagy. I'm the Senior Organizer with Food and Water Watch. I'm really happy to be here today and urge you to introduce a motion and pass a motion to support shutting down the Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility. Public safety is the number one issue for Los Angeles. I hear it over and over again. And residents and businesses will never be safe until this facility is closed down. And currently, there's still gas in that facility, so we need to decommission this facility. Aliso Canyon has been shut down since January. There's been no gas injections or withdrawals, and we haven't needed it. None of the blackouts that SoCal Gas claimed would happen have happened because the state swiftly acted and put in 31 mitigation measures to ensure reliability with that Aliso Canyon. We've been extremely successful. And still, they're rushing to reopen, even though we don't need it because their profit line comes first. We are very, very concerned that the city council hasn't taken a voice yet to support shutting down Aliso Canyon. The Unified School District did. The Board of Supervisors supports rejecting SoCal Gas's application to reopen.
Thank you.
We need you to do the same.
Thank you, Ms. Nagy. And now I'll be asking for Cora Karamaitis and Daniel, last name with a B.
Good morning, Patricia Larcara from resident of Porter Ranch. I am here to urge council to pass the motion in favor of decommissioning Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility. Aliso Canyon is there just to make money for Southern California Gas. Aliso Canyon is making us sick. I just went to the doctor on Tuesday, and he told me, what is more important, to keep your house or to get sick? You need to move out of Porter Ranch. Miasma, I couldn't even pass the, when they were, when I needed to blow for miasma, the test, I couldn't pass the test. We urge the council to reject Southern California Gas, the application to reopen Aliso Canyon. At least, LA Unified School District already is in-
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you so much. If I could get the next speaker, identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Hannah Benet, and I'm a resident of Porter Ranch. Last year, I lived through the most massive gas blowout our country has ever experienced. My family got sick, and I saw my neighbors move. Some never returned. It is appalling that this is even up for debate. The Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility is ruining our health and destroying our climate. It is time to shut it down. We aren't safe in Porter Ranch. Since the blowout was capped, there have been four reported leaks. Thousands are still getting sick and experiencing symptoms including headaches, rashes, nausea, and uncontrollable nosebleeds. We do not need this facility because we have alternatives. We urge the council to introduce and pass a motion in favor of decommissioning the Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility and rejecting SoCal Gas's application to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you. And so before the next speaker, if I can get Lisa Sarkin, Patricia from Save Porter Ranch, Key West, I guess is the street, Joe Tebow, maybe, and Carol Kravitz. Yes, sir. Please come forward and identify yourself.
My name is Daniel Burchenko, and I'm a Los Angeles resident. There is nothing I could say about the dangers of the Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility that hasn't already been said by the other speakers here. The LA County Board of Supervisors and LAUSD have both voted to keep this facility closed. The facility has leaked. It is still dangerous. It will continue to be dangerous. It will never be safe. And the only thing I can say is that I urge the city council to pass a motion in favor of decommissioning this facility and rejecting SoCal Gas's application to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
So one minute. So I'm going to say this. I welcome speaking to any one of you who really wants to know what happened during the elections. I'm not talking about any of the two items, but our election was the first online, and it was abominable. And also, I don't understand this public comment thing. I don't understand how this whole entire meeting takes place. I don't know how you can have an item that comes out of a, without going through a committee where people come here, and if we have to go downtown, or coming from Sunland to Hongar, or anyplace else, where you only have one minute to speak on an item that did not go through the committee. I'm not on our neighborhood council. I don't have to actually come here anymore, but I do care about this city and what's happened to this, this body and, and our representation is despicable.
Okay, next, please come and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Patricia Glick. I'm from Porter Ranch. Even with the blown-out well sealed, those of us who live near Aliso Canyon are getting sick. There's three teachers that are near the facility who are currently fighting cancer, a child with aplastic anemia fighting for a life. Others are suffering from asthma, daily nosebleeds, high blood pressure, and not just from the methane, but undoubtedly from the hazardous chemicals that spewed out. SoCal Gas has not released a comprehensive list of the materials so that our doctors don't know what to test for to be able to treat us. These wells were built over 44 years ago on top of active earthquake faults in a facility that is poorly managed and mismanaged, and poorly maintained and mismanaged, and will never be safe. We ask the council to please pass a motion in favor of decommissioning the Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility and rejecting SoCal Gas's application to reopen because it'll never be safe. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Carol Kravitz, thank you. I'm here in support of the Porter Ranch residents, and I too believe that the Aliso Canyon Gas Facility Storage Plant should be closed for good, decommissioned forever, because as you could hear, these residents are getting sick every day still from gas leaks, and it's, it hasn't really been needed over the last 10 months. It seemed, I really think that, you know, the, the city now has a 100% mandate on renewable energy, and wouldn't this be a perfect opportunity for the council to step forward and make these rolling hills renewable energy of solar and wind and, and get rid of the gas and clean up the community and help these people heal? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So before the next speaker, I'm looking for Lisa Tucker, Darryl Gale, and Dr. Leah Garland. Ms. Pierman, you can sit down. I'm going to call you your name. It's in the stack, but please take a seat. Yes, sir. Identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is John Tebow. I'm a resident of Porter Ranch. I just wanted to let you guys all know that the Aliso Canyon facility is still making thousands of people sick. I'm one of them. Because of SoCal Gas, I am now on high blood pressure medication and an inhaler, which I never had to be on before. So my health has been greatly compromised due to the negligence of SoCal Gas. I'd also like to, to say one thing that I'm, what I'm really concerned about, too, is when the new president comes in in January, he has already pledged that he will be removing relegation, the new president has pledged he will be removing regulations for, for the gas company. Can you imagine what will happen up there now in Aliso Canyon with less regulations? I'm truly afraid, and you all should be too. Last year, the nation's worst methane blowout happened, and it will happen again, I'm sure, if there's less regulations and if things go as they have been. I'm asking you to please make a resolution to decommission the facility. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Next speaker, please identify yourself.
Good morning. Darryl Gale, downtown Los Angeles resident. I've been concerned with the Aliso Canyon Storage Facility for over a year, since way before the catastrophic leak. And I was also present here in city council downtown when my city council voted to pursue 100% renewable energy. I was so proud of it that when I go down and testify in Orange County about nuclear waste issues, I talk about how city, the city of LA has going, is going 100% renewable. So with that in effect, I really urge you to pass a motion in favor of decommissioning Aliso Canyon. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll be looking for Susan Gorman Chang. Susan, Jason, if you're still here. Ackerman, come get in line, and you come up and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Leah Garland. Well, good news. Aliso Canyon is not necessary for energy reliability. In fact, the facility has been shut down with no gas in or out since January 2016. And surprise, there were no blackouts. Proving the blackout's threat was just a scare tactic by SoCal Gas. The state operated 31 mitigation measures to readjust the gas system and electric grid to operate smoothly without Aliso Canyon. But SoCal Gas is rushing to reopen Aliso Canyon. By rushing it, it avoids a root cause analysis of what caused the blowout and a study on shutting down Aliso Canyon permanently. So it has a lot of reason to push the study forward fast. Now, it's city council's time to take action. I urge the council to introduce and pass a motion in favor of decommissioning the Aliso Canyon Gas Storage Facility.
Thank you. Next speaker, please come and identify yourself. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Susan Gorman Chang, Vice President of Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council, but today I speak to you as an individual. I want to thank, first, actually, thank Mitch Englander for during the Aliso Canyon well blowout, he enabled Argoscientific to start this fence line monitoring program to monitor our air, which we can access from real time on our cell phones. But we have another really important ask of you, and that is for you to introduce a motion for the decommission of Aliso Canyon and reject SoCal Gas's application to reopen it. Aliso Canyon is a health issue masquerading as an energy issue. It has been shut down, meaning no gas has been in or out for almost a year. So we have proven we don't need it to meet our energy needs. I'm old enough to remember the fight to get lead out of gasoline. Lead was cheap and convenient, yet cumulatively toxic. Aliso Canyon is cheap and convenient, yet the chemicals are cumulatively toxic to us. This is a report, gasping for breath, that documents the health effects of pollution from oil and gas industry. This is a health issue. Aliso Canyon continues to leak even though it's shut down. I want you to-
Thank you. Thank you. So after Jason, if I could get Donna Pierman, Marion Fogler, Elena Semper, and Kristi Pace. Yes, Jason, good to see you.
So good to see you too, Herb. All right. So, so first off, one minute, public comment, and once every two months, is, presence here in this illustrious building is not adequate to hear the needs of the valley. We do need video conferencing to restore ASAP, like yesterday. Things that also needed to have happened ASAP and/or yesterday is shutting down Aliso Canyon. You've heard heartbreaking tales from constituents, you know, and it's very difficult to enunciate medical issues and causes in less than a minute, but they're, they're trying their best. Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council issued a five-page letter calling for the shutting down of this facility. LAUSD has taken the lead and taken the strongest stance thus far. I would urge you all who pride yourself on standing with the neighborhood councils and standing for the environment to stand up and shut down Aliso Canyon.
Thank you, Jason. Ms. Pierman?
Everyone here, that's why we need to have open video conferencing or succeed from Los Angeles. Anyway, people made the biggest mistake in voting for proposition HHH. Again, more money used for homeless will be misspent again. Housing help only the illegal immigrants and refugees, especially, I meant. If you recently bought property or able to buy a real nice property, you'll be hit with a huge property tax increase. It's an unfair tax hitting all property owners. It should have been a sales tax. Don't fool, don't be fooled, though, renters. Apartment owners pay more. He or she will spread the joy. Along with Prop M, Metro has misspent with half-done projects. So they want to have the H and the M together so that they can, the H will make projects around where the M is, so then the people, and then they, they're going to misspend the money on that. And so both M and H were terrible ones. We never should have voted for people.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler.
We decommissioned that, that San Aliso Canyon thing because those people are going to be paying humongous price for your Prop H gimmick, and that's outrageous. These people should be doing succession, and we need the video conferencing on now for them because they need to be heard all the time. What they're going through is hell to have to, have to inhale all that fumes and everything. I want us to have our rights back, and I'm for Trump 1,000%. What he's doing in this country, bringing back, what's bring the swamp here, not just in, in the federal building, but all the way down here to the city hall. We need to have our own city here that will have our people accountable, and we need to bring back our gun rights and get rid of Prop 63 and allow the people to have large guns. We got, these got these camps and encampments here. They're training to kill us. The ICs right now is here in, in the, in USA. They're training people ready to attack us.
Thank you, Marion. Ms. Semper, followed by Kristi Pace. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is actually Mayra Soto. I didn't want to get a parking ticket, so can I speak still?
Oh, okay. Oh, I called you earlier. No, you're, you're good.
All right, perfect. I'm a member of Pacoima Beautiful, a community organization focused on environmental justice in the northeast San Fernando Valley. We are also a member of the Don Waste LA Coalition, so I'm here to speak in support of Zero Waste LA. As members of LA City Council, you all were tasked with the stewardship of our environment when it comes to the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the healthy preservation of communities across the city. For multiple generations, our communities, who are mainly comprised of working-class immigrants of color, have had to endure poor air quality and dangerous jobs because of the way the waste industry currently operates. You all had the vision to pass this new system. Now it's time to make sure the program begins on time so that our communities can breathe easier, and so our mothers, fathers, and siblings who work in the waste industry and are living close to the waste industry can live in a safer environment. We encourage you all to move forward with the recommended waste haulers who have met the standards that will keep our communities and truly make Pacoima and the rest of LA.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If I could have the next speaker come and identify herself?
My name is Elena Semper, and first, I'm here to express gratitude for supporters of 100% clean energy. In your motions and in your votes, this is greatly appreciated, and I admire the fight because I know what an uphill battle it is. I'm a trained climate reality leader. I'm a secretary here in the valley. I've lived here since I was 10. I was here for SoCal Gas's fire in the 70s, and I suffered in the blowout as well because even if you live in the valley, you can't patronize the Aliso Canyon area. You can't go to the stores or the restaurants or visit your friends or the parks that I grew up playing at Bee Canyon or Chatsworth Park. So this affects everyone. It affects our businesses. And I'm, of course, I'm all for shutting it down, but also transitioning to clean energy. On October 25, 2016, Senator Pavly conducted the Select Committee on Climate Change and AB 32 implementation. Please go to her website- Please go to her website and watch.
Thank you. If I could have our next speaker?
Hi, my name's Kristi Pace.
Speak into the mic, Ms. Pace.
My name's Kristi Pace, and I just want to encourage all of you to do whatever you can to just shut it all down. That's just, that's really the only thing that I want to say about that. I know you have some power, and I hope you'll use it for good. As I was standing in line, I've added two other comments to my head. The first is, I hope you'll ignore the racism that I've heard in this room today because it has no place in such a multicultural city, and it's implorable.
That's nice to hear.
And then the last thing that I want to ask is, I appreciated protection from distraction from the puppet. In the future, if we could also be protected from the distraction of the staff members around the edges, on their phones, with their side conversations, I'd really appreciate that.
Thank you.
But please, shut it all down.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk or Mr. City Attorney, that concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, is there any other business before this council?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Okay, they are posted. They are referred.
The desk is clear.
Thank you so much. Announcements, members, announcements? If not, if I could get everyone to rise for adjourning motions, if you would all rise for adjourning motions. I will look to my left side. I don't see any adjourning motions to my left. I'm now looking to the right. I don't see any adjourning motions. Anyway, everyone have a great weekend. This council's adjourned.